We'll start the public hearing. We're giving CMC their five-second warning, so they're up and recording us as we get going. So, good evening. I'm Chris Nevin, the mayor of town. Good to see a few folks out today. And today, we're going to talk about the PFOS Treatment and Centralization Project. It's been under development for a really long period of time for us. And so, we're getting to the point now where we're moving dirt, we're putting pipe in, we've been awarded money from the state. So, things are rolling along pretty well. So, we want to highlight what's going on and make sure everybody's fully informed as to what's going on, when it's going on, and who's going to do what. So, the presenters tonight are, in no particular order, but Kevin Han, our supervisor of public works, is sitting over there. Jim Work, our town manager, Toby David, our assistant public works director, and Tom Beblebus, our jack-of-all-trades. We're going to be the presenters tonight. And then, we have our engineers in the, in the audience as well. Jason Lidle from GMB, Larry Hens from HDR. I hope I got all those initials and names right. So, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Toby, who's going to be the first presenter.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Toby David, assistant superintendent of public works. Basically, I'm going to give you guys an overview of the current water system. And then, Kevin, Tom, and Jim are going to jump into what we are transitioning to because of the PFOS issue. Currently, I mean, our population in the town, we have just under sixty-three hundred people. Water service connections are just over twenty-two hundred. The big number here at the operating budget from FY twenty-one to twenty-five, you can see the difference in the general fund. But what really stands out is the water fund. And that big a difference is because of the PFOS that was introduced. Go ahead, Christine. The town operates the water system, county operates the sewer system. And our average pumping per day is, right now, three hundred, well, in twenty-four is three hundred and fifty-three thousand gallons. Obviously, in the summer, we're pumping a lot more water than in the winter. Just for instance, this month so far, we're at like three sixty-three right now is the average pumping for July. Eighty-two percent of that is residential, which is about two-hundred-and-ninety thousand gallons of that per day. The rest of it's commercial, industrial, and for the schools, when schools are in session is the, the usage. The town currently has twenty-one permitted wells. We use fourteen of them at ten different locations. We had sixteen wells in service prior to our PFOS sampling back in twenty-twenty. Basically, our wells, how they operate, we have individual pump houses. A well gets pumped into the pump house, gets treated, metered, treated for soda ash and chlorine, and goes right into the distribution system. You guys, it, it comes to you, to your houses and whatnot. What does not get used goes right to the water towers, and that's what fills the towers throughout the night. Typically, by nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, our water towers are full. We have nine-hundred thousand gallons of water in the air every evening. The Walmart tower up north is a four-hundred thousand gallon tank. You can switch that, or call me, Christina. Kevin will point to you. I don't know if it shows the, up there. But yeah, we have the, the way up there, it's the four-hundred thousand gallon tank. It's a hundred and forty-four feet tall. The different wells we have, this picture here is for the northern water system. It's basically four-eighty-two and thirty north is going to be our northern water systems, where we have wells eleven and twelve. Wells thirty-five and thirty-six, and I'm just telling you the ones that we are currently having operation right now. And well nineteen, out off Greenmount Church Road. Kevin and Tom are going to get into which other wells are going to be coming online because of this project. And it is a benefit to the town. We are adding some more sources. At the bottom there, wells twenty-four and twenty-five are the big issue. They've been out of service since November of twenty-twenty. They were the big PFOS wells and, which sort of got the ball rolling for us and introduced us to the PFOS. This is the south and west part of the water system. To the west, we'll start over at the Panther Tower, which is a five-hundred thousand gallon tower at the old North Carroll High School. It's a hundred and fifty-eight feet tall. Then, we have wells twenty-eight and twenty-nine, and wells thirty-one and thirty-two. Well thirty-one's right by Hampstead Elementary, and thirty-two is in the back of Wellesley Court. And then, down south, you have well thirteen, and then, you have wells twenty-six, twenty-two, and twenty-three, and twenty-seven that are currently online right now with the town. And those are the fourteen wells that are currently in service right now. With that being said, I'm going to send it over to Kevin. He's going to, they're basically going to talk to you of where wells twenty-four and twenty-five, where they hit for the PFOS. This is how we got the ball rolling, and this is the basic chronology of where it started and where we're at today.
What does PFOS stand for?
So, it's a long word, about yay-long, and we, you're hearing it mentioned in the news. It's referred to as a forever chemical. It's, it's a chemical that is made up of seven carbon bonds, and those carbon bonds are extremely difficult to break apart, to deteriorate the, the PFOS. We call it PFOS. I'm not even going to try and say the actual word.
What does it mean?
It, it's, it's a forever chemical. It was a chemical that was developed initially by DuPont during the World War II effort. And since then, its uses have expanded drastically. Over the last fifty years, the, the chemicals used in almost every aspect of our life. From the fabric conditioner on these chairs, to that shiny lining inside your McDonald's sandwich, or on your Hostess cupcake. It's in heavily used in medical.
Cosmetic.
Cosmetics, shampoo. It, it's, it's been used so much, Teflon skillets, that, that lining that keeps your eggs from sticking. And that's what its general purposes for use were, although originally, it was strictly for the war effort. That's, that's how it got started.
So, we have to make sure we don't have it in the water?
So, so the EPA, and I'll go, I'll go through that real quick. This is how the, the whole scenario started. In September of twenty-twenty, I received a letter from the Maryland Department of the Environment, basically telling us they were coming out to sample for PFOS and PFOA in our production wells. That was the first time anybody ever said they were going to sample for it. It was the first time it was ever sampled for. November fourth through the tenth, MDE comes out and collects the samples. They are very difficult to collect because you have to ensure that you're not adding to the problem with the clothes you're wearing, your, what might be trapped on your hands, or anything like that. So, they take quite a while to actually take the samples properly. November eighteenth of twenty-twenty, MDE calls me out in the field on my cellphone and says, you've got to turn wells twenty-four and twenty-five off. They are over the health action limit at that time for, for PFOS and PFOA, or the PFOS family of chemicals. So, we did. We, I went out and immediately turned twenty-four and twenty-five off, and those wells remain out of service to this day. In December of twenty-twenty, MDE indicates no other wells exceeded the health action limit at that, at that time. Then, on, in January of twenty-twenty-one, the town entered into a contract with GMB to develop a strategy for wells twenty-four and twenty-five. At that time, we thought this was going to be our only issue. In June of twenty-twenty-two, and I need to explain because that, that chronology jumps almost a year there. We were, EPA was working on what they were going to set the regulations at. And we were sort of trying to anticipate with the assistance of our engineers what those limits might look like. And they came back in June of twenty-twenty-two with a four parts per trillion MCL, which is called, which stands for maximum contaminant level. All of a sudden, we were anticipating something in the neighborhood of ten. We were sort of paying attention to what was going on in Europe and, and other places, and we thought ten was where they were going to land with that number. And they landed at four. And then, all of the remaining wells, except one, had impacts when they set the level at four. So, that changed the scope of what direction the town was going to need to take once they came out with that threshold of four parts per trillion. This is the first time a chemical has ever been measured in parts per trillion as far as basically telling us what we can and cannot have in the water. So, in June through September, we met with numerous agencies, including MDE. And we developed with the assistance of engineering, a strategy in-house, how we were going to address, address the situation. In that chart, you saw some wells that the town had in inventory that weren't in service. So, we, we, we decided, let's see how we can use this to our advantage to try and incorporate some of that water that we had not been using into the new design. And we've been successful in doing that as well. In September of twenty-twenty-two, we added HDR engineering to the team. And we came up with a rigorous sampling plan for all of our wells. Before we could talk about treatment, you got to know where you're at. What are you looking at? How much is going to be in the, that we're going to have to take out? Because whatever we take out, the, the material that removes that PFOS chemicals doesn't last forever. So, depending on the concentration. So, we did a, we did a vigorous sampling program for that. Then, it was all hands on deck. Leading up to January of twenty-twenty-three, the entire team, engineering, town staff, elected officials. We all worked together to develop a, and submit a finance application to MDE for assistance because this project's price tag started to swell. And you're going to, you're going to get information on, on those numbers from Jim in a little later in the presentation. So, in June of twenty-twenty-three, we, we, the state released the ranking for the projects. They ranked all the projects across the state of Maryland that's competing for funding, and we ranked third. We've, we've had a great working relationship with MDE to get to, hit to that point. And then, in October, the final grant was, approval came out, and we know exactly what we were going to be anticipating to receive in funding. So, November twenty-twenty-three, we started having kickoff meetings, meetings with MDE designers. And, and we just started to, to actually design the project. And then, in May, or January of twenty-twenty-four, the council approved the, the design contracts for GMB and HDR. So, there was a tremendous amount of work that has been done in the engineering alone. The project is sort of broken down into two parts. The first part is the, we, we have to centralize. Currently, in a lot of your developments, there's one little pump house that has one little well outside of it. The water goes into that pump house, it's treated, and it's sent right out to the system. The GAC equipment, or granulated activated carbon, that we're going to use to remove this, it's not conducive to putting those sixteen-foot-tall vessels in every one of those little pump houses. So, we designed, came up with a plan, basically, probably the biggest public works project the town has ever taken under its wing to try and accomplish, to centralize the, the system, taking multiple wells to one location. So that we, and, and what we've done is we're going to be building three new water treatment plants. And we're going to be doing an addition to one water treatment plant. As you can see at the top of the screen there, you see arrows coming from wells thirty-five, nineteen, and thirty-six. Well thirty-three is on that property. Well thirty-three is currently out of service because it has manganese issues. It's a sixty-eight gallon per minute well that has been offline because it had manganese. With this project, we're going to bring thirty, thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-three are already pumped to that, that pump station. We're going to bring nineteen over. Well, well nineteen has a manganese of zero. So, we're going to be, through blending, be able to take care of our manganese issue, and we'll be bringing well thirty-three online. And there'll be four wells coming out of the North Carroll Farms Water Treatment Plant. And it'll also be GAC equipment in there to remove the PFOS chemicals. Down, you see Dairy Water Treatment Plant. Those wells have been offline for roughly fifteen years. They've been, they were moderately, marginally high in nitrate levels over the MCL. So, they've been sitting in inventory. Both of those wells are seventy and seventy-five gallons per minute. So, we decided to come up with a plan to roll wells number eleven and twelve. Right here, they're going to be conveyed up to the Dairy Water Treatment Plant. And I'm happy to report that we're no longer going to be needing to do ion exchange to remove the nitrates from wells twenty and twenty-one for several reasons. First, well number eleven and number twelve, their nitrate levels are around five parts per million. The, the limit is ten parts per million. So, they're, they're going to be blending with wells twenty and twenty-one. There will be GAC equipment there to remove the PFOS. And then, and in conjunction with, the farming activities have stopped up there. And that's what was causing the slightly elevated nitrate levels at wells twenty and twenty-one. So, the north side's going to have quite a bit of water production coming out of those two plants when this project's all completed. All right, let's go to the next side. So, the south end of town and west. We're going to be taking, we're going, through multiple pipeline projects.
Hey, Kevin, let me do, let me do that. Go ahead.
We're going to be doing several pipeline projects in, in an attempt to centralize the water system on the west side of town. Wells twenty-eight and twenty-nine are in the Shallow Run Development. And we'll be putting pipeline in to take them up to the new Shallow Water Treatment Plant that's going to be built next to Hampstead Elementary School, directly next to the existing plant that's there, is there currently. Well thirty-two is in the Westwood Park Development and the Wellesley Court. And that water is going to be conveyed across to that pump station as well.
She can't see, they can't see in the back there.
And then, the last but not least, you, you see wells twenty-seven, twenty-six, twenty-two, and twenty-three down in the Roberts Field area. Those wells currently do not need any treatment, currently. We're hoping that holds true. The only one down on that end of town is along Lower Beckleyville Road. And we are putting a new water treatment plant, although not as big as the other ones. That new facility's going to be built on a piece of the property known as the Hampstead Skate Park. There's been, and I'll address that right now, there's not, no changes to the skate park. It's just, it's a piece of property that's currently not being used for anything, so we're going to put the building in there. So, there is the pipeline work. And as Toby said earlier, and the mayor, some of that work's getting ready to start imminently. This part of the project has been bitted and awarded, and gone through MDE procurement checks. And the Board of Public Works has actually approved this project, part of this project. So, we're moving forward with this now. The first slide on the left is the pipeline that's going to be running from wells eleven and twelve at Melvin Miller Park, just north of the railroad tracks. And it'll be running up just past Greenmount Station Restaurant and ducking back to the old dairy property there where we're going to be building one of the new water treatment plants.
That was a new road.
Yeah, and it'll be a new road going back. We will no longer be going between the people's house and their, and their garage that live there. We're going to put a new access road in as well. Eleven and twelve will be conveyed up there. All the treatment will take place. It'll blend with twenty and twenty-one. And we'll get that hundred and forty-five gallons of minute of production back that we have not had for about fifteen years out of, out of those two wells. The next slide to the right is how we're going to bring well number nineteen. Yeah, we're going to, the wells down there, we're going to bring that over to the North Carroll Farms Water Treatment Plant. And that's basically through an, an empty lot, a little bit of the cul-de-sac, and then, in the grass along Upper Ford Lane. Moving on to the next one. Dakota Road, top-left one, comes out of our pump house on Dakota Road. It will meander up through the development and duck out onto Panther Drive, and then, turn right and head up Shallow Road, which is a, we've been working with our partners at Carroll County because that's their road. And we've already secured our permits for doing that work. Sure.
Does that, does task number three, does that go back behind Hampstead Elementary?
It goes in front of it. In front of the, yeah.
Under Shallow.
Yeah, it's, it's going to go underneath the bypass, coming the other way, but this way. And, and there, our contractor's cognizant of the school hours and what they've got to do to, to make sure that there's no issues with that. The, the good news is, and while I'm talking about it, we've, we've got a contractor on board that, that we're very familiar with. As many of you know, we started Main Street Revitalization in twenty-fifteen with our water line project. And they have done all, all of the work associated with our, so they're very familiar with us, and we're very familiar with them. And that we're happy to have them because we've had very minimal issues with, with their work. Mid-Atlantic Utilities. Yes, sir. Task four is from well thirty-two. And it's going to be conveyed all the way out to Shallow, through some of the Westwood Park HOA property, and then, out to the county road underneath the bypass at the bridge, the overpass, which is important. Going underneath the bypass any other way is quite challenging. So, we were, we were lucky that the county worked with us to get that accomplished. That, that well in Wellesley Court, as of today, is our largest producing well. It produces about eighty-two gallons a minute. And it's, it has treatment there for manganese. That treatment will continue. And the manganese free water will be sent over to the new treatment plant by Hampstead Elementary School, where it will be treated for PFOS through the GAC vessels.
So, is this, are they going to dig up the road?
Yes, yes, ma'am. They'll be, they'll be excavating. So, basically, just so everybody has an idea of how that whole process works, there will be nothing left open at the end of the night. They will, they will cut the, saw cut the road. They'll open what they can put in in a day. And then, they will come back with black, stone, CR six stone. And they'll put temporary, what we call cold patch, on top of that stone. Once the, once the roadwork is completed, they will come back and do what we call a permanent patch. A permanent patch is where they saw cut X amount of inches to the other side of each side of the ditch line. They'll excavate the blacktop only, and then, they'll put new hot mix, regular asphalt in to make the permanent patch.
And the water is going to have to be turned off every day?
No, 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 no. This is a raw water line. It'll have no bearing on your individual water services to your houses. Yeah, this is, this is simply to convey the water from that pump house to where it can be treated at the new water treatment facility.
Most of this piping will be in before any of the facilities are built. So, the piping will probably be put in there and might sit for quite a while until the buildings are built, and then, it'll be connected in. So, by the time those pipes are used, the new system will be online. So, there'll be no interruption from the pipeline work with the public works pipeline.
He's pivoting from the road between phase one and phase two and task four. Right in front of your right handle. You're coming off of that port and going cross-country, right here.
Right there.
Why not go cross-country from the get-go, from the pump house down into that valve? Wouldn't that be less intrusive? Wouldn't that be less intrusive?
We looked at that, but it actually, where it gets real tight at the very southern end, down behind there, we would have to go off HOA property onto a private homeowners. That was the issue.
Yeah, the state highway right away comes out here too. And you can't, you can't, you just stay highway, you're allowed to stay highway, right there.
Then the last one on task number five is Lower Beckleyville Road. That pump house will, that line will be put in the ground as well as some conduit to convey the water from our well number 13 down to the brand-new water treatment plant that'll be built down close to the skate park there. Most of that work is in grass. There is a little bit of asphalt work right at the intersection. We have to do a new tie-in to the existing water system there.
We have some skate parks right here.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. It's a dumb question, but I'm assuming all these lines that you're running are going to be a two-way? So you're pulling up from like Wellesley Court and circle, that's where the well is. And then you're pulling from there out to the new treatment. Does it have to come, does it have to come back?
It's all, those lines are already part of your distribution system. None of your, Wellesley Court has an eight-inch ducted iron pipe that everybody's taps are on. There's no work being done to that. That'll still be your, your distribution port will be, stay the same. Right, no taps, no taps off of the raw water line.
What I kind of got from our, is we were concerned with the restoration. You're just doing a trench patch.
So it'll, it'll be, it'll be a state highway permanent patch initially. And the way, way we generally work, we've done a lot of, a lot of the projects through town. The way we generally work it is the contractor that's doing the work will have a paving contractor come in and do the permanent. Now, at the end of every day, as they're working along the street, that'll be a temporary, what do we call, cold.
And will it just stay open so that any settlement or any, happens before you ever get the road built?
Then they'll put the permanent patch in. And generally, the way we've been working it here in town, the, then in a, later paving bids outside of the project, we do a two-inch mill and overlay where we've, where we've tore up the project. So we did it on, just to give you an example, Upper Beckleyville Road, of course, the Main Street project. Yeah, there, anywhere, we want to give an adequate amount of time, even though the contractors do a great job of using their equipment to get good compaction, we want to give it a little bit of time to do any kind of settling it's going to do before we come back in and spend the serious money to do a two-inch mill and overlay. But that's generally how we handle that.
So you will come back eventually in the very end, you're going to?
As budget funding and funds continue to be available, at some point in time, Wellesley Court has never been paved since it was new. At some time, in its natural attrition of life here, it will need two-inch mill and overlay. And that's when we'll get that nice, brand-new macadam that you see across, across the whole road. But the two-inch patch, I can give you a couple instances where a permanent patch, we just did some. South Carroll Street, if you go past, across from Shiloh here, along the edge, that's a permanent patch. And we just did, Antietam just completed some work on Main Street, right at Chanel Court. And that's what, that's what the permanent patch is. The lines go back down if there are any. And then in subsequent paving bids, we do it upright, so.
We just need to let the neighbors know that we're not going to end up like a companion road.
No, 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 no. No. One of, one of, one of the things I take pride in is how our communities look. And we'll, we'll come back at the appropriate time and it'll get rolled into one of our natural paving, everywhere, including North Main Street. North Main Street's had a lot of work when Ridge Engineering was built. We had to open, cut the road. There was some work associated with the Antietam Fiber Project that went through the town. There's been some issues on North Main Street with gas installations. So at some point in time, we're going to go back and we'll do what we call a two-inch mill and overlay.
If there's a couple areas outside of this project due to settlement undermining from the war, initial installation, will they be able to take care of that? Is there depressions in the macadam from, I don't know if there's?
Well, it's a, it's a good chance that some of that'll get disturbed and fixed where they're running the pipeline. That's always the case. So, so that's all the pipeline task. So, basically, what are, what are the treatment plants going to look like? And this is our engineering rendition of those plants. Like I said, these vessels that you see, the granulated activated carbon vessels, some of them are as tall as 16-foot tall and they're quite robust. They require large openings in the building to get the skid equipment in there. And then, over the course of time, that GAC material is going to need to be changed out. And so you have to make sure you have adequate facilities to get trucks and tractor trailers in there because that material sucked out and new materials put in. But that's, that's a general look at what the plants are going to look like. They're all sort of very, yeah.
This is the Shiloh one specifically, but they'll all be based on the same type of footprint and exterior, but.
Yes, sir. With the grant from the state, do we currently have enough funding for this whole project?
Well, Jim will dive into that.
I'll get into that.
We didn't, up until just a few weeks ago. We, we started out at one number, and he'll break all those down for you and how, where that, where those funds have come from. We're very fortunate, we're very fortunate. And we've, we continue to rank, we ranked very well in our last submission, which went in January of this year. We ranked seventh throughout the state. So our.
That's over 100 applications.
Yeah. Our, our partners at MDE have, have made this something which was a dream on paper, a possibility.
Yeah.
Question, I'm going backwards, but is this a federal thing or is this just coming from Annapolis?
No, there's, there's emerging contaminant funding during the Biden administration. They started, they, they started these PFOS regs. They put money out and, can I go ahead and tell them?
I'll tell them.
You tell them.
I'll tell them.
All right. We're, we're very proud of some of the things that have transpired, so I'll let Jim get into that. Yeah. They're the controlling authority.
EPA jumped in after, sorry enough, just the local EPA was managing what Maryland was telling them.
Yep.
As far as like the regulations or the funding?
Regulations.
Okay.
And all of this.
Yeah, so the regs came down from the EPA. Maryland for, thankfully, didn't make them any tougher.
So they have the right to, they have the right to do that?
And essentially, four parts per trillion, I'm here to tell you, is almost zero when we're talking about something in parts per trillion. It's, it's difficult to really quantify in your head.
To give you an idea.
One drop in an Olympic-sized pool.
Five Olympic-sized pools.
It's, it's.
Whereas if you microwave popcorn, you're.
You're eating it by a handful. And, and one thing, I think I'm about done unless anybody else has any questions and Jim will take over. But one thing I want everybody here tonight to understand, if you have a refrigerator in your house with a water and ice spigot on the door, nine chances out of 10, if you pop your filter out of your refrigerator, it's going to say right on there, this filter removes PFOS. All of our friends and neighbors that live on the outskirts of town that have private wells, basically EPA just told them to stick a charcoal filter on their, on their, on their water system. GAC is a huge charcoal filter. That's all it is. Now, it does have some other things. There's other things in the water that this, this stuff will help clean up. None of them above any kind of limits, but it will take it out. We're going to be, we're going to have a really good product once this, this is all operational. Thank you, sir. I appreciate you saying so. We, I'm happy to tell you that in April, the town won Water System of the Year for the state of Maryland through Maryland Rural Water Association because of the vigorous approach we took to solve this problem. If you don't have any more technical questions as far as the water operation, I'm going to turn it over to Jim and he'll go over the financing and. They're four inches. And they're, they're going to be a plastic pipe essentially. It won't be, it'll be new, new technology. We, we are going to try and keep as much tree, and there are, you know, when you do the surveys, when the engineers go out, they even have to mark the trees. And all that work's been done. We've, we've been working collaboratively with Carroll County about some of the tree, some of these were forestation projects. All that's, all that's been worked out and it's gone through all the proper channels.
Basically, the area of the path we're going to take through there, they estimate how many trees we would have to take down, which isn't many. But we had to basically, we could have started putting that number into a tree bank. Or there's an existing area on the other side of the bypass down at the bottom of that hill that basically we're now going to turn into forest conservation area to offset that loss.
So do you have an easement of like X amount for that, but it's a four-inch pipe? You don't, you're not going to necessarily use that whole?
No, the, the reason you have to have an easement is to get equipment in if something breaks and then you got to dig it up and fix it. And, and these easements will need to be mowed by our, our contractors because obviously you got to know if you've got a problem. But these, these are home run, home run shots. No, no taps off of them. They do have some air release valves and they'll be in vaults and things of that nature. But pretty straightforward. Any other tech?
Curious. A lot of our kids cut through my backyard and go under the Shiloh Bridge up to the elementary. There's currently a big riprap trench through there. Any way we could pipe that and make that paved so our kids don't have to walk in the road?
Well, that's a state highway.
Shiloh's state.
The, the state considers the area under that bypass and we had to go through some hoops to put a four-inch pipe in there. And it's, it's quite, quite complicated. That, that would have to be addressed with the state. That's not something the town. We had to get basically permission to put that pipe in there. And they have added several thousand dollars' worth of work that we'll have to do because they're concerned that our pipe could rupture and erode their bridge embankment. So that's a sticky situation there.
They actually made us encase the piping under there. They also made us put a valving down there in case something busted. We could turn it off right there. So it wouldn't affect their bypass.
Which were the ponds where the bog turtles?
What's her?
Wasn't the one down by?
So I'm not at liberty to tell you where the ponds are, where the bog turtles are.
That's not them.
That, it's not those.
So they can go up through there where the?
Yeah, that is, that is, I had to sign paperwork that I would not reveal that to anybody where the bog turtles are. They are quite the black market catch. And I'm not at liberty to say, but they're not there. All right, Jim.
Take us home. I'll get into the boring administrative stuff. It won't be that long, hopefully. So with this project, there's actually six different contracts that need to be executed. We have the pipeline construction, which is the second item there. Along with that, we have pipeline inspection services. We have to hire an outside agency to inspect and be on site every day to make sure the pipelines work does, is done correctly, materials are correct. Then we have the GAC ion exchange procurement. As Kevin discussed, at this point, we do not need the ion exchange any longer because the nitrate numbers have gone down. So that is now strictly just a GAC granulated activated carbon procurement. We also have two water treatment plant construction contracts. We did it this way with two different contracts because of the federal money, there's timelines involved. We have to be done by a certain point. If we'd gotten one contractor to do all four, we feared we would not, we couldn't hit that, that timeline. So we have North Carroll Farms and Shiloh are one contract. And then we have Hampstead Valley and Dairy as the other contract. And along with that, we have the water treatment plant inspection services. And once again, that's, that's basically to have inspection services on-site every day, watching construction, checking materials, basically testing things as they're put in. And in this case, it'll be at least two inspectors every day on the job sites. So where do we stand with the project? So pipeline will start, the latest date I've got, these are preliminary numbers, is August the 24th, I think. Pipeline is going to basically follow the task numbers right now. They've changed it up some. So they're going to start with tasks one and two, which will be Main Street and Upper Ford Lane, Murphy Court, Murphy's Run Court. After that, then they will come over and they will do tasks three and four, which is the Wellesley up to Shiloh and the Dakota Road Panther down to Shiloh. And then they'll finish up the pipelines with the Lower Beckleyville Project. This project, the pipelines, has an end date in June of next year, 2026. We're confident that it's, it will, as long as weather is good, they'll have it done before then. So we're looking at maybe April or May. So, okay. So here's the financials. On the left-hand side are the costs. Pipeline Inspection Services, $93,000. Pipeline Construction, $2.7 million. GAC procurement, one, almost 1.3 million. Those are all given numbers. Those are what we have contracts for. Water Treatment Plant Construction, then just under 19 million. That's for both construction contracts. That's an estimated number. All the numbers with asterisks are estimated based on engineering's, engineer's numbers. So you add them all up and we're adding in almost a half million dollars for administrative league on fiscal costs and then a thousand, a million dollars for contingency. That 3.2 million at the bottom for engineering design, that is a fixed cost. Those are the contracts with GMB and HDR. So total cost of this project's $30,843,917. Let's hope it stays there. Yeah, so, right-hand side, this is the financial assistance we've received so far. So in 2024, we got the EPA. And what that is, is Emerging Contaminants in Small and Disadvantaged Communities Grant for $18,914,000. What makes that unique is that's EPA money. That is EPA money that the state gave, the EPA gave to the state of Maryland and said, here's 18.914 million. You guys disperse as you see fit. And they saw fit at that time to give the entire amount to the town of Hampstead. Below that is an MDE Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Forgivable Loan, $586,000. As long as we do everything correctly and we get done on time, that's forgivable. We do not have to pay it back. The two items in orange, we have received these as preliminary numbers, preliminary approvals for these amounts. We will receive final confirmation probably in October. They go now, once these numbers are set, then they go for a second review. So the first one, I got to pull my notes out for what IIJA is. It is, that's an EPA federal money, and that is Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, PFOS Emerging Contaminant Grant of $1 million. Once again, that's, we don't have to pay back. The last one is the MDE Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan, $7.157,146,000. So, and that, as of right now, that is a loan, very low-interest loan over, I think it was 30 years? So when we, that will be the last piece of the puzzle that we get to as far as financing. Something good happens and we come in under budget, we won't have to use all that. At the same time, we're continuing to look for additional grant monies that we can use. If you look at the totals down the bottom, we're about 3.2 million. And basically, in local funds, town funds into this project, that's the engineering costs. We decided to go ahead, pay the engineers out of our pocket so we could get started. If we hadn't done that, it would have been probably six months because we would have had to get MDE's approval to use them. And honestly, we may not have ended up with the engineering firms that we wanted because it's all, and, and a equal business opportunity. because it's all in a equal business opportunity. So that's where we stand with the funds. You know, hopefully, we can find some more grants and bring that $7 million loan down some. But it's, you figure, $30 million project, 2,300, 2,400 service users. It's, it's a big hit. So, but, right? And basically, that's the end of the presentation. I just want, Maryland Department of Environment's been great to work with, the Engineering and Capital Projects Program and the Maryland Water Infrastructure Financing Administration. You know, people sometimes grumble about MDE. Well, and this project has been the exact opposite. We send them an email or call them, they get right back to us. We have their cell numbers to reach out to them. Carroll County Public Schools, they granted us an additional easement on the Hampstead Elementary Project for ingress and egress and new utility work going in there. GMB Engineering and HDR Engineering, those guys have been crucial to this project. And the residents of Hampstead, that, they've helped us out. Some of, we've gotten needed easements through driveways. They've helped us out with that. There's been two areas where we actually needed to purchase some land. One gave us a very, very low price on the property that we purchased. The other said, I'll give you the land. So it's been very good working with the residents. And so that basically wraps up our presentation. We'll open now. Any other questions? I just, basically, we just wanted to let people know that this is what's coming. How it's gonna be done, so.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Appreciate it. We'll hang out if you have any more questions. And thanks to the guys for doing such a great job.
Kevin, Skater did call me at 6:53.
I got one, and I cleared it. It was for Pump House 5. It said, "Now normal."